Order, the regular meeting, Board of Director of Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, Monday, June 15, 2020, time 6:06. Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Director Byrne?
Here.
Director Riley? Director Riley?
Director Riley, you're on mute.
Please unmute yourself. I am, I'm losing the connection right now, so I can't make any changes.
Thank you, but I'm unmuted, I'm here.
Director Evans?
Present.
Director Hoffman?
Here.
Director Adams?
Here.
Director Potter?
Still working on getting him connected.
Here.
Here.
There, you gotta talk up a little bit, you're getting lower and lower.
Okay, I will.
Thank you. Call stand for the president, let's just put a flag.
One needs to be.
Okay.
I don't know if I put a flag up or?
Um, I'm sorry, I cannot right now, I am losing, WebEx wants to close on me right now, so I cannot. I can't, I'm waiting for the program to come back. Someone needs to close their mic.
Gary, I believe that's you. Director Hoffman, you need to turn your mic off.
Okay, I may need to close WebEx.
You just stop, whatever you did.
Well, I haven't done anything to it.
So I just got a thing on my screen that says you're now the host of the event?
Okay.
So did everybody get that on their screen as well?
No, they should not.
Okay, mine says you're now the host of this event.
Um, right, Jeannie?
Good job.
Um, I'm going to have to close Cisco on my end. I'm going to have to close WebEx on my end. So, um, I'm not sure if that's going to close out the program altogether, or if I'll just be able to rejoin.
As long as we've transferred the host to somebody else, which is Jeannie in this case, it shouldn't close the meeting.
All right.
So now I have to, I have to click okay?
No, I think you can, does it ask you to?
It says, it has a blue bar that says okay, or I have to exit out. But my only choice is to say okay, or exit out.
Say okay. And I'm going to have to exit.
Now what?
Uh, you just, just, if you're the host, just stay where you're at, all right?
Okay.
And I have to close the program and see what happens.
So this is Director Hoffman, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I, I think we're good now, thank you.
All right, Director. We'll wait for Arlene now.
Okay, it looks like I'm the host again. Still, everyone's still there?
Yeah.
Excellent. All right.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Laredo, after all that, do we start all over, or are we good to go?
No, you are, you could pick up from where you are.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any additions and corrections to the agenda?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
In, in the consent calendar, items four and five do need activity tonight. So contrary to what the note says about deferral to July, we need action, or we would have to demobilize construction under item five, and we would lose a month under item four.
Okay. So if they get, oh, all right. Next item, oral communication. Anyone wish to address the board on the consent calendar? Information, items, post session items, or not listed on the agenda may do so only for oral communications. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all other items at the time they are presented to the board. Oral communications are, are open.
Director Edwards, I see no raised hands.
No raising, well, good. Thank you. Oral communications are now closed.
Arlene?
Yes.
Director Potter says he is in, but he cannot hear.
All right, let's see. All right. So he is calling in. Oh, I see. Hello, Director Potter. I see that he has entered as a, I, I see him on the list of panelists. I have, I cannot control what he can hear on his end.
Right.
Has he turned out the sound on his own computer?
Yeah, it could be a volume issue on his own computer.
Okay, the board members who would like anything pulled from the consent calendar.
Chair.
You need to cut one of them off.
Chair Edwards, yeah, I have, um, items, item five, ten, eleven, and twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Okay, five, seven, twenty-four, okay. Any other board members who would like anything pulled from the consent calendar? I hear, Arlene, could you ask, do they want anything pulled from the consent calendar?
Let me see if there are any raised hands. I see no raised hands.
Thank you. Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, except for item five, ten, eleven, and twenty-four.
And number four, I think.
And number four.
No, no, he only pulled five, I think.
Director?
What, twenty-four? Pulled twenty-four?
Yeah, twenty-four.
Director Riley, do you want number four pulled, or are we all right?
I, I thought General Manager said that number twenty-four, number four and five needed action tonight. I wanted to confirm that, and it ought to be part of the motion.
Right, but if you leave or on the consent calendar, it'll go with.
It'll be approved.
I see, okay, so four's still on the consent calendar.
I will second the motion.
The motion is for the consent agenda, except for five, ten, eleven, and twenty-four.
Okay, and I think Director Evans just seconded it?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Don't roll call both.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Potter? Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Motion approved. I have six votes.
Motion approved, six to one.
Uh, six to zero, uh, one, one abstention.
One extension, thank you.
I'm sure he had a vote, we just can't hear it.
Okay, General Manager, item number five. Director Hoffman, what did you want to know on item number five?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, couple of things, one is that the Water Use Authority sunsets at the end of this month. And this seems to be a contract to conform with, or as requirements, after the fact that they don't longer have any authority. So that's primarily my concern. And it's not clear what additional work is associated with the site that requires this consultant rest to be hiring. And I noted that in the staff report, that the vote was two to one, and I'd be interested in whoever the board member who dissented, what their concerns were.
That's great. The dissenter was Molly Evans, and she can explain that in a second. I think she's now satisfied. The previous contract for unexploded ordinance was with FORA. And as you point out, they will be dissolved as of, uh, June 30th. The City of Seaside has said that we can continue with our grading and construction as long as we directly secure a contract with an authorized unexploded ordinance consultant. Otherwise, we would have to demobilize, uh, July 1st. And so what this is doing is moving the responsibility from, uh, FORA, through us, to their subcontractor, directly to the same contractor, now in a direct relationship to meet the needs of the City of Seaside.
Through the chair?
Go ahead.
Dave, isn't Seaside the successor agency to FORA, so there's that relationship still?
Yeah, they're becoming the successor agency.
Right.
In, until recently, they hadn't actually taken that mantle. And I'm not sure if they've had their city council meeting yet, um, which will do so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Director Hoffman.
Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, as a follow-up, the staff report indicates that the city informs staff verbally in via email, but that's it. And so there's been no formal correspondence regarding the requirements. So I'm concerned that we're entering into a contract for something that the governing agency is not going to require us to do.
Director Hoffman, this is Director Evans, if I may. That was my concern, and that was part of the reason that I dissented at AdCom. It is my understanding that the city council meeting in Seaside that was held on June 11th had on the, a topic on the agenda was, um, whether, uh, Seaside would pick up the, uh, to be the local redevelopment, um, agency, or the successor to FORA. And considering that the council had not made the formal move to do that, there is, there was nobody to request that, um, that unexploded ordinance, uh, cleanup would continue to be a requirement. So my concern was that we had been notified verbally, but not formally, well, because there was no formal agency to notify. And with the sunset of FORA on June 30th, um, and our meeting today, if we didn't have, if we didn't have action on it, then this would be pushed off until such time as we did take action, which could bring all of the, the work at, um, the ASR site and the work at Pure Water Monterey site to a halt, and, that was my concern. I had the same concerns that we didn't have proper notification. But, um, I think that the city did the best that they could to notify that, that this requirement was going to continue without being able to formally do so. So once I found out that they did take it up at their meeting on the 11th, um, and while I don't know the outcome of that, personally, I would make the assumption that it did pass, and that this would be appropriate to do at this time.
Is there some reason why we can't find out the outcome of that meeting before we decide to spend this money?
Um, I can Google it right now, if you'd like.
I listened to the meeting, and I thought they approved all that FORA stuff, but I, I'm not sure, but we need to make sure.
Well, I think it was made clear at the, at the AdCom meeting that the, um, intent was to continue the progress, um, as it was in place. And to, to not take that on, uh, was detrimental to the district in the projects.
That's correct. The, so a couple of things, the contract is time and materials. When we went to AdCom, we'd actually tried to authorize it at the same level that we had with FORA, but then we got a, a rate sheet from the contractor, which was substantially less, because we didn't have to pay FORA overhead, and pass through it that way. But it's only if there's a discovery of something that looks like it might be ordinance, and then it's time and materials. And so, um, there's no guarantee that we'll expend any of it. The goal is to just not have to demobilize our construction, uh, folks who are out there, and then lose, uh, both momentum and cost.
Any other questions?
I would, I would make a motion to approve this item.
Okay.
Second motion.
And Director Hoffman, do you have any questions, any more questions before we approve this, or disapprove it?
Uh, Chair Edwards, I deny.
Okay, thank you. We had a motion by Vice Chair, and a second by Director Adams. Um, roll call both.
Director Potter? Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Motion passes, six, zero. One abstention.
Okay, six, zero, one extension. Let's keep trying to get in contact with Director Potter. All right, item number two, number 10 there, Director Hoffman.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Chair Edwards. Um, the reason why I pulled this was because I think the district needs to take a leadership role in reaching out to the underserved minority communities in hiring of the limited-term positions that we're talking about here. So we should make a concerted effort to recruit applicants from minority communities to fill these positions, and I would hope that, uh, we could succeed in that endeavor.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. Through the chair.
Do you have a question on that one?
Yes, um, are there specific requirements for these positions? I mean, expertise?
Yes and no. I mean, we typically try to find, um, environmental science majors who are doing, you know, matriculating at CSU MB, for example. There's some coordination and strength, uh, testing. I don't know, Thomas, if you want to weigh in on this one?
Yeah, sure. Um, this is Thomas Christensen. Typically, what we do is we post these job announcements at, um, CSU MB, and online places such as MB, and other places, and we kind of go through the resumes, and then we typically select about six to seven people to interview for these positions. And then during the interview, we see who, you know, would best, who's best qualified to do the work, who's willing to work in Poison Oak, and all those things. This year's a little different, um, because we have some past people that, uh, have worked for the district that were wondering if, uh, we were looking again, and because of the COVID situation, we thought maybe if these, since these people were already on the books, that we potentially might, um, uh, have them return. Because no employee is allowed to work for the district as, on a temporary basis for more than a thousand hours, so sometimes we have interns that work for a thousand hours, and they go away, um, and do other jobs, and then they, they end up calling back, you know, the next summer and say, hey, are you guys doing fish rescue again? So we, we have hired people that have worked for us in the past, but our intent is always to post these positions and, and reach out to the community and, and interview people that are interested in them.
Director Hoffman, do you have any more questions on that?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
I think that in the environment we're in right now, I think it's, again, you can take a leadership role in bringing in the underserved communities in these kinds of positions, and expose them to environmental positions that they otherwise might not be aware of. And using the same people, I think that when we look at the diversity of the district staff currently, I think we're woefully inadequate. And so here's an opportunity for us to step up.
Mr. Chairman?
Question through the chair.
Go ahead.
This is Dave Laredo. This is on the agenda to authorize funds to contract for these positions. What's being discussed is an HR function, it's a management function. Certainly, the board could adopt a policy with respect to serving the underserved, but that's not what this item is about. This item is to authorize funds to contract, and it delegates, which is to delegate to your demo manager, implementation authority. Uh, and, and so the discussion is really quite far afield from the funds authorization point.
Okay, thank you, Director Hoffman. Do you have any?
Yeah, I would just disagree with that, because we could easily tie the funds of this, funding of these positions to the hiring of the individuals, so they're not, um, unrelated.
Question for the chair?
Go ahead, there, Vice Chair.
Um, how would you advertise this, other than the way it's being advertised? It seems like it's a pretty broad-based advertising, and doesn't limit it to any one ethnic group. So anybody has the ability to apply for these jobs.
Through the chair?
Go ahead, wait a minute. Vice Chair, did you get, General Manager?
I'm sorry, I did not quite hear that.
Uh, Vice Chair, you want to repeat that again?
Well, I said that it appears that this is being advertised in a broad base, um, and anybody from any ethnic background is eligible to apply for these jobs. I don't think there's any limitation here.
Through the chair?
Go ahead.
I, I think, um, this is a subject about, uh, hiring practices, and not the contract. I'd like to move approval of the contract authority, uh, and then this discussion can come up in a, in a, in a different, a different format, but not this item.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a, we got a motion by Director Riley, and second by Director Adams, that's who I heard first. Uh, discussion? Just a quick comment on a second. Director Hoffman, I appreciate what you are doing. I went through this before on the, on an item like this. So we need to bring it up again, but we need to separate it where we can do that, about going out and applications being put out to the public. I thought about that years ago and brought it up, and we're back there again, so I'm glad somebody else said something. All right, roll call vote, please.
Chair Edwards, if I may?
Excuse me.
This is Director Evans. I just wanted to say as well, thank you, Director Hoffman, for, for bringing this up. I think that it's very appropriate. Um, and I think that that is something that we should look at as board going forward on our hiring and opportunities like this. So thank you.
Excuse me, before you take the vote, um, I believe that, uh, Director Potter has joined again.
Yes, try, Arlene, try calling user seven.
Yes, that is my next move.
You have to get this right.
Hello, um, Director Potter, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great, um, I'm going to, um, keep you unmuted so that you can participate in the meeting.
Thank you, I'll try to be quiet.
Well, at this point, I can't, uh, make you a panelist, um, but I'll just keep you unmuted, and then you can participate. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're about to have that roll call vote now.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven, zero.
Seven, zero, motion passes. All right, next item, item number 11. On page 57, Director Hoffman.
I'll make this short, you, I was gonna, 10 and 11 were the same comments as relates to diversifying the hiring and bringing in , um, the underserved communities into these positions, and giving them the opportunity to experience environmentally related jobs.
All right, sir. We'll be looking into that one. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Director Evans, I'll move approval.
Motion by Director Evans, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Director Potter, I'll let you get in there. All right, roll call vote.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven, zero. Motion passes seven zero.
Seven zero, thank you. Uh, item number 24. Page 109, Director Hoffman.
Yes, Chair Edwards. It seems to me that this item should be considered after item 32, which, budget, since it's related to whether to continue on with the water charge.
Okay, you think that makes, um, general manager, how do we address this?
Well, this speaks more, more to the collection method. And this is, um, where we've implemented a, basically a contract via resolution with the assessor to collect the charge as a separate, uh, rate or charge on their assessor's bill. Um, Suresh, I don't know if you want to weigh in. I see you've got your microphone open.
Yeah, it is time sensitive and whether we adopt the budget or not, uh, by adopting this action doesn't mean that it's automatically collected. We still have to trigger something by sending file to the county. So let's just say if the board decides we're not going to collect the water supply charge, with this resolution in place, we still can withhold the file and don't send it to the county for collection. So taking an action on this one will not hinder the action on item 32. And, and this is time sensitive, so we need to, uh, adopt it.
I move to, uh,
Wait, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. Director Hoffman, do you have anything else on that?
So what harm does it do then to address it after item 32?
General Manager, can you answer that? You are Suresh CFO.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I was gonna say, as long as it's taken action tonight, I think it's fine. After 32 is fine as well. Uh, just to remind the board that it has to be taken action tonight.
Hey, thank you. General Manager, you have any?
No, I agree.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, there.
I thought this was, I thought this was our funding mechanism and the 152 money was what was on the table to sense it.
Uh, well, this is the rate or the rate and charge that is the water supply charge, which is the ordinance 152 oversight panel. But, you know, I, it's pretty clear to me that we won't not collect some or all of the water supply charge for the current fiscal year. So the method of collection is what's being authorized through this resolution.
Very good.
Okay. Actually, Chair Edwards, I would say that needs clarification in that. Um, this is prospective and this is a collecting charge in the subsequent 2020, 21 year, not, uh, for the previous year. So it is germane to, uh, the decisions on the budget that we're going to be discussing later.
This is Director Evans. Can I make a motion to move this to directly after the discussion on the budget?
We have a motion, you got a second by me? Roll call vote or discussion? No discussion, roll call vote.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Edwards?
Aye, this will be item number 35. Okay, thank you for consent calendar. General Managers' report.
Thank you. Um, Arlene will bring that up on your screens and I'll try to be quick. All right, uh, this is the compliance with both the cease and desist order and the seaside groundwater basin adjudication. Uh, the important takeaway here is actual year-to-date is below, uh, target by an amount of 112 acre feet. And we are 48 acre feet over the same period last year. Excellent. Uh, this is just to show you that the type of water year that we had resulted in, uh, lower, um, actual table 13 water rights, but higher than what was targeted. And, uh, Sand City D cell has, uh, performed relatively well for the fourth month in a row. Uh, and it's doing better than last year. Next slide. Um, and actually, this, this chart actually shows that, uh, under the Sand City column. This again is production for customer service or a measure of demand. Um, we are currently 186 acre feet better than last year or lower than last year. And our, uh, moving average of, uh, storage, I'm sorry, of, of production, 12-month rolling average of production is well under the, uh, rule 160 limit. So we're doing well there. Next slide. We did want to try to get some sort of understanding if there's been an impact due to the shelter in place. And I can tell you that the results are relatively inconclusive. Um, in April, we saw a decline of 116 acre feet over the prior year. But remember, we had some really good April rains, which may have offset irrigation. And so it may not have been the shelter in place and the trade-off between residential water use going up and commercial water use going down. But you can see that our April this year was in general better than the last two Aprils. But then it came along May where really rainfall was not an issue. Um, completely sheltered in place and we're 14 acre feet over last year and 16 acre feet under 2018. So I don't think there's anything that jumps off the page here that says there's a COVID-19, uh, impact that's systemic. Now, we'll check it again, uh, with the June numbers. But I just found it interesting that there's not a, uh, a, a real stark trend, if you will. Next slide. This is rainfall. Um, I think that, uh, we're now into the summer months, so it, it will be negligible. Um, I am, I, I want to remark that we had zero rainfall in October and zero rainfall in February. And I think a lot of people were really worried. But at 84% of the long-term average, we are now in what would be called a normal year. Next slide. This is just the rain gauge where the red line is cumulative year-to-date. The blue line is actual, um, basically by day. Next slide. This is unimpaired flow. Um, May was fairly average and April exceeded. But the February, March, January, February, March winter months were below average. Uh, but where we've come out to is about 66% of long-term average. And it looks like we will finish the year again under the normal category. And that concludes the compliance report.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions? Board members? No question. Okay. Item number 29, General Manager?
Yes, so this is an update on the phase two, uh, activities that were authorized by the board. Uh, they were first discussed at the November board meeting following the November 12th, uh, public workshop that indicated the economic feasibility of, uh, an acquisition of the Monterey system. The water system was feasible, but there were, uh, other pieces to piece together. Um, so next slide. So we came for authorization, uh, in December for more detailed operations plan, doing the Sequel compliance, uh, specing out the LAFCO process, a formal appraisal and a bona fide offer, and the findings which could lead to a resolution of necessity by the board. Next slide. So the findings are, uh, a review of many documents. This is a memorandum that's, uh, currently almost finalized, uh, by Rutan and Tucker, the eminent domain law firm we have. It's, uh, currently over 200 pages. And by the time Dave Laredo and Fran Farina's fingertips and, and some of our staff are done with it, it'll probably be a 300-page document. Next slide. You also authorized a formal appraiser, appraisal, uh, where we were going to use Ref Telus, who were the financial consultants who can comply with, uh, the legal requirements of a formal appraisal. But we have sourced a, uh, real estate appraiser to do the real estate assets, of which there's about 110 parcels. So, uh, very complex task that's going to take, uh, another bit of time. We'll see on the, uh, chart to come. Next one. You al- also authorized looking at a couple of other financial needs. Um, a preliminary look at the rate structures under public ownership versus investor and utility ownership. Uh, we've seen a preliminary look from that, from the consultant. And then a review of options for low-income assistance programs, given, uh, the opinions that we have from our outside counsel on Prop 218 issues. And so we're working on that. Next one. The more detailed operations plan is, um, to look at both an integrated operation, which means, uh, all existing CalM employees or most all existing CalM employees come over and stay with the system. And then we also contracted with Jacobs Engineering Group to look at third-party operations. Uh, and we went out to a couple of, uh, contractors and decided to sole source with Jacobs. Next slide. Um, the Sequel process, uh, given the board's current appetite for doing more, uh, competitive bidding, we identified three potential consultants, received proposals from two. The board approved in March. So we lost a little bit of time because we had to get it out to the street in January and wait for responses in February, and we approved it in March. And we selected Rincon Consultants. Um, and they're on a very, uh, rigid timeline. They will be releasing the draft environmental impact report on the 18th, which is Thursday. Excellent. LAFCO, we've got two, uh, key pieces to our application. One is the annexation of these little tiny parcels that are just outside the service territory. So the red line is the district territory. The first slide that says Yankee Point identifies about 33 connections to the CalM system that are not inside the district's, uh, sphere of influence. And in Hidden Hills, there's, I think it's, turns out to be about nine connections. Um, in those parcels, the blue to the right of, uh, the red line. The red line's basically, uh, Laurelis grade. So we need to look at annexation of those into the service territory. And then we also need to activate some latent powers, which is a process by which, um, that LAFCO will determine whether we should be authorized to become the water provider and retailer, uh, in the region. Next slide. So the LAFCO process is one that we will be handling primarily internally with the general counsel and our staff. Next slide. So this is what the schedule was when everything was authorized. Uh, we met in November, authorized in December. And we had looked at an August to September decision on a resolution of necessity, meaning that most of the work was expected to be complete at the end of June or, uh, mid-July, giving the district time to, uh, pull it all together. Uh, we've learned a few things since then. Next slide. So here's basically where we're at. Um, Rutan and Tucker, we were able to bring into a contract amendment in January, mid-January. And I mentioned their memo on findings, uh, that should be complete here in a couple of weeks. And then we will spend time with it, uh, July and August and finalize it in the September timeframe. Ref Telus, uh, everything that they've been working on is somewhat in draft form. Uh, they have not yet reviewed our work on a low-income, uh, rate proposal. Um, we figured we would do that while, uh, we're doing some of our internal review of the findings. And then they'll be in a position to finalize. The issue we have with them is they, to finalize, they depend on the, uh, appraisal of the real estate assets. And that is slated with approvals tonight to occur in September. And there's not much we can do about that one. We, you know, we probably could have gotten the appraiser on board a little sooner, which would have been helpful, but it wouldn't have changed really the, some of the other timelines. The two operating studies, uh, it took us a little while. It was early February, not quite the 15th, to get Close and Associates, uh, amendment to their contract done and to get Jacobs Engineering to, uh, sign an agreement, uh, both a non-disclosure agreement as well as, uh, a contract. They're doing work, uh, we've had regular meetings and reporting back. Um, I can tell you that, uh, Craig Close, due to some issues in his family with a death and, uh, illness, is probably into July rather than June. Um, but again, with what I'm going to tell you about the next, uh, it's, it'll work out. So that brings us to the red bar. That's Rincon Consultants doing the Sequel work. Once we decided, primarily Dave Laredo, myself, um, with some other staff input, said that the more robust approach would be an EIR rather than, uh, and, you know, the, an exemption for one piece of this and a mitigated negative deck or a negative deck for the other, that the more robust approach would be an EIR. And as you can see, public review is going to start mid-June. But they're very rigid timelines for, you know, 45-day public review and addressing all the comment letters and then finalizing. And so there's no way that that process could have been accelerated any, any faster than mid-September. Here's where it gets to be problematic. LAFCO, well, at the advice of our eminent domain attorneys, they would, they would not ask the board to consider a resolution of necessity until LAFCO approvals are in place. LAFCO won't have a hearing until the environmental document is done. And so they originally, um, looking at our schedule, said that they would be in a position to have a hearing in December. Since then, they've kind of hedged a little bit and said probably their January meeting. And even if they take action at that meeting, there's some follow-up things that typically, that are out of their control, that typically take about 60 days. So the critical path on all of this is the environmental review in red and the LAFCO process in pink, which means any of this other things could slip a little bit, but they're all slated to be finalized before we're going to be able to have a hearing with LAFCO. Um, and that's just, we're kind of stuck because of their need to have final environmental review done. So that's our current schedule is best case, December. Um, more likely case, January for a hearing with the follow-up, uh, six to eight-week period for the LAFCO, uh, eyes and keys to get dotted and crossed. And then with that, I'll take questions.
Okay, any more questions on measure J?
Uh, through the chair, quick question. Do any of the other reports, uh, have any, uh, connection to, um, I don't know, making the argument in the LAFCO procedures?
Uh, not really, no. Um, you know, I think that the, well, the real answer is, yeah, probably. Because they have to decide that if they're going to let us activate latent powers, which means to run the utility, we should give them the comfort that we'll be able to run the utility. And that there will not be a diminution in the service or the quality of service or the quality of the product water. And so the operations plans will provide some of that comfort.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, General Manager, are we planning, uh, town hall at the end of this, on measure J?
It sounds like there's some questions. Um, the town hall issue, we did speak at Public Outreach, um, about starting in June. I think given this schedule- about starting in June. I think given this schedule now that we've really sussed it out. I want to see what the attorney's memo looks like first. And I want to, I've actually got feelers out to all the consultants to find out what their schedule is. But I want to see their best draft work product before we have any reportable action. So maybe the end of July.
Town Hall, okay, that's sound good. Any other board members have any questions?
Yes, Chair.
Go ahead, Director Hoffman.
Based on the schedule, it looks like the economic aspect of it will be determined or will have a better number before December regardless of the environmental review process.
Correct.
So when can we have the number as to what the cost of acquisition will be?
Right. And we need to think of it more in terms of what the offer would be. When they did the work to determine economic feasibility, we rolled into it a fully complete desalination facility. We rolled into it the payment for some things that maybe we would be on the hook for, or maybe we wouldn't be on the hook for. I think that is amortization of tank painting or amortization of acquisition premiums for little systems they bought elsewhere in the state. And so we fully loaded the economic analysis to see if the cost of service would be reduced under public ownership. Now what you're honing in on is really a bona fide offer. And so you wouldn't, you wouldn't offer to buy a D cell plant that's not built yet. You wouldn't offer to pay for a number of things that you might end up settling for in severance through a jury trial. So this would be more like a, okay, based on the assets that we currently see them, here's what you're worth. So it's going to be a different number, of course. That would be basically the beginning of October if the real estate piece is done on schedule, which, you know, that's the schedule that we've been given.
Any other questions?
I can't find my raise the hand button. I'm old school here.
That's all right, Director Adams. Around in there, go ahead.
Thank you. Dave, from, from your experience and from the reputation of the various consultancies that are working with us, do you, what's your, you know, what's your best guess? Do you feel optimistic that we're going to be able to meet the schedule? Or should we be starting perhaps not the red flags, but maybe some, you know, dark penguins?
Yeah. So I do believe we can meet the schedule. I'm a little concerned that if we're not coming to you with results until Lafco is done, then some of these are stale. So I think we need board workshop, you know, this is real property negotiation as well as threatened litigation, but I think we'll need board workshop kind of as we get major pieces of it pulled together. So certainly, I don't know if you want to do something before Labor Day or after Labor Day. I know that we want to reschedule the board strategic planning session. Hopefully can be done in person. I'm losing my optimism on that after Labor Day. But somewhere in that late August, early September, we should have a board workshop. And then we need to have a serious conversation with all the consultants about how do you keep it fresh? If we can't go to the board until early next year, how good is that bona fide offer going to be? You know, what's, what's the date we're going to want you to do things? And so they may have to figure a way to put some of their work on hold and then keep it fresh. And I haven't had that conversation with, with Ref tell us yet.
So with setting those, those sort of benchmarks, is that something that you and the staff will do? Or is that something that we as a board will be actively engaged in?
You'll be actively engaged in reviewing the work product. So I think if we've got solid draft material, so the, the operations plan is not going to change. You know, the org, the org chart is what it, the org chart is, the way you'd operate it is going to be the same. Their conclusions, I don't think will go stale. But the price you're willing to pay has to be current as of the time you're going to do it. I think Dave Laredo, at some point, we have to give a notice of intent to appraise. So these are, there's a lot of staff work that can continue, but I really would like to have a board workshop kind of based on the one, two, three, four, four of the first five items in that summer, you know, late summer, early fall period.
Thanks. Thank you very much for your assessment.
Questions? All right. Thank you, General Manager. Somebody say something? Okay, we're under director's report, including AB 1234, reports on trips, conferences, attendance at meetings. Any director have anything to report? No directors have anything. Now we're going down to public hearing. We have one public hearing and four action items. Arlene, how many people do we have on this call in this meeting?
Arlene, I see a gentleman has raised hand.
Yeah, the quick, quick answer to that question is there's 25 members of the public who are on.
All right. Thank you. We're going to use a two-minute clock to get through this. And our first public hearing is what there?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Directors, Chair Edwards. This public hearing is item 31 on your agenda. And it's to consider the adoption of the fourth quarter of water year 2020, which is July through September. So I'll walk you guys through this quickly. So this order, as we try to every time, is consistent with all of the state water resources orders, as well as wanting to meet our 160, Rule 160 target and as well as seaside adjudication. The state board order that is the most pertinent to this is the one that talks about how you produce water out of the Carmel Valley as the flow resides. And so that is done through a mechanism called the Low Flow Group. And it has figures which we watch in the river to shift the pumping away from the upper valley wells and control the release of Los Padres to keep the fish habitat wet and allow our fish rescue crews to go through the river and rescue fish. It also has a component of ASR recovery plan. We bank 916 acre feet this winter and we are going to move into the fourth quarter to recover that and use it for supply of water to the community. And then of course, phasing into this whole process will be pure water Monterey and we've begun the tracer test and the operational reserve is currently building up. So this has a few assumptions in the quarterly water budget. It assumes that we will use the full amount of seaside basin coastal areas, all of the native water. That is to maximize the savings on the river. So any savings that we have below the Rule 160 targets are this budget targets, concentrating those on the river. It's most environmentally responsible. And this also assumes that we're entering the low-flow season in late July and the low-flow group will start meeting next month. And to support your information, the low-flow group is the same membership as the quarterly water budget group, which is Artis, CalM, Fish and Wildlife, and NOAA Fisheries Services, as well as the State Water Board. This budget was developed on June 4th, 2020 by this group. The other three quarters of the water year, we look at what we think will be precipitation, but as Dave stated earlier, precipitation in this climate is not much of an input through these months. So what we do is during the fourth quarter, we switch to look at what we think temperature will be because it will be a proxy for if there will be larger demand than normal, hotter being more demanded and lower being less demand. And so you can see here that it's saying there's the next three months, it's having a 60% chance of being warmer than average. And again, this is the last three months. So this is where we are on the Rule 160 chart. So we're moving in and checking our totals against these numbers here. And so with that, we'll move into the quarterly water budget. The first part of it is to notice is the seaside groundwater basin as a source. And you can see the ASR recovery and the recovery of the rest of the native state seaside groundwater is slated in through July through August. Then the remainder of the water that is left on the river from the CDO is distributed through the last three months. And that brings us to the totals of 1230, 1232, and 1158. However, I did want to point out that the five-year average of production for these months of July, August, and September is 961 in July, as opposed to the 12,030 acre feet that's left over when you total up everything you have left over. So if we take the 1230, the 1232, and the 1158 and we subtract them, we should see if our production is what is average. It's savings of 269, 269, and 268. And if the budget does what it's supposed to do and concentrates all that on the river, that will materialize into 806 acre feet of CDO carryover credit, which will then go into that bank of water. So that's the plan moving forward for all of the sources and how to use that and how to best benefit the river, support fish rescues, and have a total of CDO carryover that we can use in the future if necessary. So with that, I can move to staff recommendation, which is adopt the proposed water supply strategy budget for CalM's main system for the fourth quarter of water year 2020, the July through September 2020 period. And that concludes my presentation.
Any board questions at this time? Any board questions? Okay, just one question, Jonathan. When are we going to start using pure water?
That will be, it will, once there is a thousand acre foot operational reserve built up, we will start bringing it on to the production as a source. There will be some timing based on strategy of when you use pure water Monterey. If you were doing large-scale injection in the heart of the winter, you would hold off until you had stopped injecting and then you would start recovering. But so, so it does depend on the style of operation that you're in. But it would, it would become available on the ledger in the source the minute we tick over 1,000.
Yeah. And we're currently slated on or about August 10th. We would shift from operating reserve to deliveries for customer service. We, as of this morning, there were 635 acre feet in the operating reserve. And as John mentioned, the goal is to get it to 1,000.
Okay, are we going to meet that?
It all depends on.
All of July, are we going to meet it?
No more surprises. You know, we still haven't restored the Tuvedo zone wells that had the, the one that had the subsidence issue. So if we could get those back online, we'd be in good shape. But even at the pace that we're currently at, that mid-August date is still pretty solid.
Okay, that's good. Okay, that's, that's good. Any other questions from the board before we take it to the public? Okay, Arlene, let's open it up for a public comment for two minutes each.
Hello?
Hello?
Is this for Wayne Kelly?
Arlene?
It looks like on my screen it says speaking, it's Alvin and Wayne Kelly. I think I just got turned off.
Yes, you got two minutes, sir.
Okay, I wasn't announced there. Sorry about that. Yeah, it's, it's okay. I'm going to take less than two minutes. So that's totally fine. I'll be the first guy. Or the first person. I wanted to speak about Article 30 or number 33 regarding the.
Excuse me, that's the next agenda item.
Two, two away. Yeah, we have to get through the budget first.
Oh, you know what? I, I totally apologize. I raised my hand. I just thought the public comment was just for the whole thing. And I will bow out and I apologize for using your time. I'd rather speak on, on item 33. Thank you very much.
All right, that's two more items.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
That's all right. No problem. Arlene, are you with us? Dave, could you find out what happened to Arlene?
Yeah.
Chair Edwards, there are no other raised hands.
Okay. No other raised hands? Okay. Back to the board. Do we have a motion and a second on this item?
This is Director Evans. I'll move approval.
Director Evans moved approval. Do we have a second? I'll take it for you, Director Evans. Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call vote.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Riley? Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Evans?
Aye.
And Director Edwards?
Aye.
Motion passed in seven zero.
Seven zero. Thank you. Our next item, General Manager.
Yes, this one I'll just turn directly over to Suresh. It's the budget presentation. He can identify a few minor changes that were made since the budget workshop in May.
And I'll be turning that over to you and just trying to get that over to you right now.
Thanks, Arlene. Good evening, Chair, members of the board.
Turn off that timer. All right, just a moment. I'm sorry to hold you up.
So tonight's action is to consider the adoption of the budget. And I'll go very briefly. I'm not going to dive into detail as I did in last month's budget workshop, but I'll briefly summarize, highlight on some of those points, and I will mention some of the changes that happened to the budget as I go through my slides here.
You are now the presenter, Suresh.
Yes, got it.
Thank you.
So the, tonight's budget is pretty much the same what we had seen about a month ago with the exception of a few minor changes. Like I said, I'll hit some highlights of it. How we got here tonight is basically in April, we started developing budget with the division's initial input. And then on May 7th, all of the team managers met during a budget session. We hashed out the budget, went back and forth and verified what needs to be presented to the board. We came in front of the board on May 13th and we provided the, what was the draft budget during the budget workshop. And we did take the comments and input from that meeting and also input from staff after the meeting that kind of like made to the final budget, which is tonight's budget for board review and adoption. Just hitting on those 2,000 former board adopted strategies. Again, it was to have the balanced budget. We had to maintain all the existing services. We had to maintain a 5% operating reserve and then at some point get it up to 50% over five years. The budget I'm presenting here tonight has a 44% operating reserve. And that's because we've made some shifts to the operating budget, shifting some money into the mechanics bank loan reserve. We'll talk about more on that. There's a slide on that. Despite the balanced effort for the 2004, we have not been able to balance it without the use of reserve. And the last few years were mainly because we were heavy into the pure water MRA project. And last year was really heavy into the ASR project as well as the pure water MRA project. So again, the 2021 budget that's presented here tonight does not include, I mean, does include the use of reserves, and that's to maintain our current programs and services. So it, it does take into account that we're going to be using about a million dollars, a million five of our reserves. And as I had mentioned before, the total reserve balance on the operating budget sits at 44%. So we were mindful of the current status of all of our funding needs. The, as I had mentioned, the original division request came in. We reviewed those. And then the format is same as what was presented in previous years, just so that it makes it easier to transition. And then the COVID-19 goes back to the status, the impact. We did evaluate that. We did put in some COVID measures in here, meaning there are some reduction in our revenues. And that's just basically being careful. We again don't know as Dave is showing his slides all year on. The order numbers really days and you can't justify them right now. We have not seen the April collections, but again, April collections will most likely reflect the, I mean, yeah, the, our April user fee collection would most likely reflect the March collections for CalAmp. So that will really will not give us a true impact until we see the collection that's in mid-July, that would be the May user fee collection, but really depicting the April transactions for on CalAmp's side. So there's one more cycle to go before we can see and say whether the user fee is going up or down. The proposed budget presented here tonight is $24 million. Last, when I presented in May, was about 21 point, some change. The big increase on that is because there was a grant funded project, about $2.4 million worth of projects that was not added in the preliminary budget when it came for review. So it has been added to the budget. That took the number up to 24. But it does get added to the revenue side as well because it is, it is a grant funded project. So it's 100% funded from the grant proceeds. So we see the expenditure going out by that amount of 2.4. We'll see the revenue going out, up by 2.4 as well. So the net effect from that big addition is, is zero to the district's budget. The budget is, the 2021 budget is a little bit higher than the 1920, and that's mostly to do with the projects. You'll see the project number stands at about $16 million. That's including everything, the ASR, pure water MRA, reimbursement projects, grant funded projects. And we went through all of these projects in details at the May budget workshop, so I won't go into any of those. And then this budget, this is key, which is basically includes a full user fee collection for the entire year, and that's based on estimated CalAmp collection of revenues. As I had mentioned, we have put in the COVID-19 impact in there. We've basically reduced our user fee by about 15% for the year. I don't know if that number is good or not, but by the time we get up to six month mark in December, we would be able to make adjustments to our mid-year budget. But throughout the, throughout the process, throughout the months, we will continue to monitor the collection. And if we see a significant decrease, we will definitely report to the board on how that's going. The budget also assumes a full year of water supply charge included in the proposed budget. We do need that funds to balance the budget. And so basically, we've also included the full year property tax revenue. And both of those, we have the COVID-19 impact included in there. It doesn't affect the amount of revenue, but it does affect the collection of the revenues for both water supply and property tax. Because if they are delinquent, if the bills are not paid, we don't get the proceeds. So we've included some, some adjustments in there. And again, we'll monitor those. And if, if those numbers go up or down, we will definitely be making the adjustments at the mid-year. Some savings on the personal cost side. We basically still continue to outsource our HR, IT, and GIS contracts. And all of those three combined is saving us about quarter million dollars a year. All of the vacant new positions, hiring has been suspended until January 1. They are total four positions. Now, there may be one position that will be coming back to you in November or December. That is the wea position. If we have everything in order, we will definitely come back to you. So that position may get hired in December, but we'll, we'll come back to the board for that action. The general reserve 500,000 coming directly from the Pebble Beach Reclamation Project. The board recalls, we funded a, financed a project, the Poppy Hills tank for the Pebble Beach Reclamation Project, a million dollars. $500,000 is to be paid in next year, 2021, and the other 500,000 will come in 2122. So that money comes in because we had used our reserves to pay for that project. We are taking that 500,000 and putting it back into the reserves. We are again setting aside 200,000 for pension OPEB reserve. The new one here is the mechanics bank reserve. We did hear the board's concern at the budget workshop. So we are going to be setting aside $500,000 towards that. So we are gradually going to build on that. If we were to set aside a full $900,000, which was the fully amortized number, if we accrue them over three years, we couldn't afford the 900,000 this year. Simply doesn't leave enough money in the water supply reserve fund. But we could definitely move 500,000. So we are starting as a seed money, and the next year definitely we want to put more money towards that. So that by the time we come 2023, for the loan to come due, we can definitely take that from our reserve and just pay it. We have the, the capital reserve. This is something that's changed from prior year. We used to have capital equipment reserve. Now we've kind of like generalized it. It's capital reserve. And that includes all of our facilities for the renewal replacement. So we are setting aside 324,000 towards that fund. So the expenditure summary, in a nutshell, what it looks like, the $4 million, you'll see 51% of the budget is project expenses. The 18% of the budget or about 4.4, yeah, 4.4 million dollars is the reimbursement project. So if you add those to, that was about 16, the tag is about $16 million or something. So you can see it's hefty on the project side. So that's what adds mostly to the $24 million budget. On the revenue side, you'll see about 17% comes from our user fee and about 14% comes from our water supply charge. Property tax, about $2 million. And then we've got about $7 million in carry forward. And what the carry forward number is basically, these are previously approved projects by the board that were not done in last fiscal year. So basically what we did was, we looked at the projects and said, okay, if this project's not going to be done, it's going to get done in 2021. But because they were previously approved by the board, so we've just taken that number and carried forward. So basically, that's what that carry forward number entails, the $7 million. And you'll see the fund balance, we are showing about 1.9 million dollars coming out of the fund balance, the reserve fund balance. But if you take that 1.9, that includes the $500,000 setting aside for the mechanics bank loan. So it's within the reserves, but it's just kind of like shifted from one reserve to another. So truly what we are doing is we are using 1.4 million dollars to balance the budget. Then you've got some reimbursement revenues, 2.4. That includes mostly the grant. And then some small numbers in capacity fee. I'm sorry, the reimbursement doesn't include the grant. That includes the California American Water Company ASR projects and rebates. The grants is a separate line of, again, 2.495 million dollars. So that's what entails on the revenue side. The total budget expenditure is $22 million, pulling aside reserves 1.5. That gets us to $24 million. And then on the revenue side, you'll see the district revenues, which are user fee, property tax, and water supply charge, 10.4 million dollars. Reimbursements of about 4.9, close to $5 million. And then the carry forward in reserves from our previous slide, $7 million, something on the, on the carry forward number, and then 1.9 on the reserves. And the, and this is what the analysis of the reserve looks like. So no change to the litigation. The capital reserve numbers go up from last fiscal year because we are banking about 300,000 into that. There's no change to flood drought. That reserve for the Rabo Bank still sits at 222. And then the pension OPEB gets up another 300,000 this year. So we've done that for the last three years now. And you can see the mechanics bank. So that number 500,000, basically, we moved it from the operating reserve line, which is the line after. We moved it from that as a separate line. So now we've got earmark that says that we've got the mechanics bank loan. And I keep losing my mouse. So originally, when we did our 19, 1920 budget, we had expected our reserve balance to be 14, little over 14 million dollars. Then we came to the board for the mid-year budget adjustments. That number dropped down to 11.4 because we had set aside almost close to $3 million for the ASR project, which was higher than what we had expected. And then with this budget, what we are proposing tonight, we, the, the estimated balance at June 30th, 2021 is estimated to be little less than 11, 10,958. And you'll see the bottom disclaimer there. It says operating reserve ending balance is projected 44% of the operating reserve. And just to show what the reserve analysis is, basically, you'll see most of them is in the general operating reserve, but we've got all the other earmarks attached, and that basically just depicts the percentage of the total reserve. Also wanted to remind that there are some future obligations commitments that we like to highlight to the board. And so basically, that futures commitments stands at about $15 million, a little over 15. Some of the changes that were presented in tonight's budget from what was presented in May, basically, there was some salary and benefit savings. We looked at our Excel spreadsheet. There was a few numbers that we had missed. And so basically, that knocked down our salaries by a little bit. There was some professional fee number going up. The outreach consultant, we had all year estimated that to start from January 1, but outreach committee wanted that to start sooner. So we've budgeted now that part of the contract to be effective August 1. There were some changes, minor changes to the ASR project, about a $15,000 change. And we did add the grant project. So those were all the four or five changes that I've mentioned. And then the other big change was we created the mechanics bank reserve line item. Those were all the significant changes that we had. And that gets to the end of my presentation, which basically we are recommending the board receive the proposed budget. And then the board adopt the attached resolution 2020-06 to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2021. And I'll be happy to answer questions.
All right. Thank you. Good job. Board members, any questions for the CFO?
I do have one question, Chair.
Go ahead, Director Evans.
Thank you. Page 173, your pie chart of revenue summary.
Yes.
Just, just a point. When I was looking at it, the grants that you mentioned, you said it was about 2.5 million. And that's, that's new since the last, since we saw this last month, right?
Correct.
And so in the pie chart, it does, and it's just a little nitpicky of me, but it does show it as 1% of our budget. And I think it probably should be 10% of our budget.
Oh, wow. Yeah, that is.
Small.
It's, we have, but we'll, we'll definitely fix it. It's automated. I don't know why it's showing that 1%. I mean, all these numbers are kind of like automated. So we'll, we'll check.
Yeah, I would assume that you're using a program that would do that. So just.
What is it, another 100,000?
It's, it's zeros, too many zeros.
Okay, thank you. Any other question?
I have a few questions, please.
Go ahead, Director.
The Rabo Bank loan is the mechanics loan, the mechanics bank, right?
Correct.
So you use both terms in the budget. And I just want to make sure of that. Second thing is the 500,000 for paying down that debt, that's on principal, right? So that targeted is for the principal, not the interest piece.
Correct. We still have the, we still have the ongoing principal and interest every year, and we'll continue making the payment.
Yeah, basically, Director Riley, what we discovered was if we set aside monies at the beginning of the next three fiscal years to earn at 1% assumed interest rate to have exactly what's needed for the payoff balance, you'd need just over $900,000 a year. And then Suresh informed me that we don't have that money. You can have 500,000. So we're starting low, and then hopefully we get past some of our project expenses, and next year we can do more. But that also then presumes that in each of those fiscal years, the regularly occurring principal and interest is paid in the budget, budgeted separately from this fund.
Okay, thank you. I'll have a few comments during discussion.
Okay. Director Hoffman, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Go ahead.
Section 10 of ordinance 152 states, "As long as the annual water supply charge is collected, the district shall hold a public hearing each calendar year in connection with review of the annual budget." It further states that the district shall require the annual water supply charge to sunset in full or in part unless the board determines that the purpose of the charge is still required and the amount of the charge is still appropriate. Section 10 also states that the district shall not collect a water supply charge in FY 2018, 19, or any subsequent year if no district project is identified and determined by the board of directors to have been underway as of December 31st, 2017. In my review of the budget documents, I could not find that the requirements of section 10, ordinance 152 were met. So if you would please specify where in the budget documents that the requirements of section 10 are met?
Well, I don't think they need to be laid out in the budget document. This is the hearing. The projects, the, the idea of having a date certain by which you have to have projects underway has been met by virtue of the construction at ASR and the construction of Pure Water Monterey, as well as the operating reserve Pure Water Monterey. And the continued uses is basically a board determination made by reviewing the projects in the budget workshop as well as the final budget for adoption.
And if I may add to that, Dave, basically, we do have a, what's called a three year CIP as part of the budget document. It's on page 1. My page numbers are kind of like all messed up, but it's like 176 or something.
Yeah.
And that also identifies all the projects the district has.
So as a follow-up, that CIP moves the projects that were identified before December 31st, 2017? The other question I have is page 158 states that project expenditure budget includes 3 million for a new well related to Pure Water Monterey project. I have not seen any engineering report or CIP plan identifying the need for any new well related to Pure Water Monterey or any expenditure or project schedule showing that a $3 million expenditure will be necessary during the 2021 fiscal year. So why is the $3 million expenditure included in this budget when there's no documentation identifying a need for the well? And what I've seen in the newspapers that Monterey Water doesn't even know what they need yet, and they haven't even indicated that. and they haven't even indicated that additional well is needed. So how is it that we are assuming spending $3 million in this next year for a project that is not even out of the ground yet?
Yeah, well, it's been brought up at water supply planning. Investigations are being done. Part of the, the whole triage on the Bedouzone wells were discussed, as well as the performance of the two deep water wells. And it's, as we've learned, if you think that actions are going to happen during the fiscal year, then it's better to be prepared to have that money available. If it doesn't happen and we can meet the the demands without breach of the contract, the water purchase agreement, that would be great. Then the money doesn't get expended. I can tell you shortly after that number was put into the budget as a placeholder for future investigation, preliminary discussions at Monterey One Water and the design team point to of value that's even higher than 3 million. And so there's still some question as to how, if it's elected to head in that direction, how it would be fully funded. And there's some effort being done to talk to the state about reopening the loan. There will be design options, but you know, this is the beginning of a 12-month process.
Hearing is that there is really, these funds would not be expended in 2020, 21, yet we'll be collecting them from the ratepayers and the citizens of the communities that we serve when they can use the money more than we do.
No, no. If, if it's decided that a third deep well is the appropriate remedy, then it would be expended in 2021.
Director Hoffman, any more questions?
No, I'm good. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Director Potter, do you have any comment?
No, I'm fine. I know a lot of work went into this. It's not an easy year to balance the budget, but I think we're better off than some of the other organizations. I know Mary and I have struggled. The local government is trying to go ahead and get our budget balanced. This has not been as painful as one that I've been going through lately. So I appreciate the hard work. Thank you.
All right. Director Adams, do you have any comments on this?
A comment is that I'm glad that we're starting to put funding aside for the sinking fund. I think that's really important. I was happy to see that $500,000 there. And thanks very much for your hard work on this. There's no question about it. It was a challenge and you've done a great job.
Director Evans, do you have any more questions or anything?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Okay, this is Alvin speaking. What is that project that we left out? That was about $2 million or whatever.
The grant project?
Yes.
That was the IRWM implementation grant?
Yeah. So they actually announced the winners in between our budget workshop and this meeting.
And did we win? Did we get in there?
We, all of our, all of our projects were selected for funding.
Well, good. Thank you.
And, but they're not really, they're not all our projects. They're really, you know, it's part of that whole IRWM group, you know, which is multiple local parties. So there's several projects that are being funded by others through us as the grant coordinator here locally.
All right. Vice Chair, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I didn't have any questions, but I think it was an excellent presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Arlene, can we take it out to the public? Two minutes, please. Thank you.
Yes, we can. Does anyone have comments? Oh, I see one. Please raise your hand or if you're on the phone, press star nine. And I see Mr. Bruno, just a moment, Mr. Bruno. What are you doing? Do you want the time limit to be two minutes or three minutes?
Two minutes. Throw out.
All right. Mr. Bruno, I'll have you on in just a moment. Mr. Bruno, please present your comment.
Good evening, members of the board. Paul Bruno, resident of Monterey. I'm a member of the Ordinance 152 Oversight Committee. And in a prior life, I used to be a certified public accountant, spent a lot of time with numbers. I can tell you that I probably have a broken record because in the past I've said the same thing. But you should be especially concerned about your future obligations. You have a significant pension and future benefit obligation hanging out there, $9.6 million. I know that you want to address that and you want to put some money towards reserves, or at least some allocation towards reserves. But the best way to have money available towards those obligations is to really think about expenditures today and how you can roll those. It's, you never know when something like COVID-19 is going to pop up and how that will impact budgets. Eventually it'll flow through to your district as well. So be concerned about it. Some point in time, you need to put that towards the front of the thought process. Also, you have your Rabo or Mechanics Bank loan. I know it's out there. I know you're putting some effort towards that. I think that's important as well. Overall, I, I know the district is trying its best to be conscious of its budgets. But until it hurts, it might not be enough. So I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other persons who would like to comment? Please raise your hand or dial star nine on your phone. Chair Edwards, I see no other comments.
Thank you. Board, do we have a motion? A second?
I have a couple of questions or suggestions before going forward.
Okay, go ahead.
Suresh and Dave, I've had some concerns in the past about how the budget is presented in terms of carryover funds, grant funds, fronting money for grants, fronting money for maybe delayed revenue sources and so on. I'm just, I'm just, I'm going to make this, make this simple, I think. On, on page 175, you have a summary of the revenue sources. I just want to confirm, Suresh, that I'm on the right page for this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just hoping that in the future, and maybe we just need to discuss this, but what I'm, what I'm having trouble with is understanding the use of the reserves to balance a budget in relation to carryforward issues, grant funds that are subject to reimburse, so we front that, and maybe delayed revenue sources that we also front the money on. And I'm just wondering if, just going to the bottom of that page, if after carryforward, there could be a subtotal and then the rest of the adjustments could have to, could be a subtotal. And that would break out, I think, the picture of the fronting process, at least for public understanding, a little better of why the fronting process is a, is a kind of driver for how we use reserves. And I, I'm just, I just would like to see something like that. Maybe we can discuss it some more. Maybe I got the wrong approach to it, but I would, I would like to discuss that. It's, it's how we use the reserves. We haven't used the reserves that much in the past couple of years, but before that we were using it a lot and now we're back using it. I would just like to see a little more of a pattern approach or an approach on when and why we use it. I understand why, but when we use it is more, more the question. I mean, I'm, I'm not looking for a comment necessarily, but and I have no approval of the budget, actually.
No, I can definitely touch base with you, Director Riley, and we can see if we can make some accommodations to that, at least with this budget as well on page 175.
Yeah, it, it's kind of a transparency issue to me about trying to understand it and thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Looking for a motion, looking for?
I move approval of the budget.
And I'll second it.
I motion.
Okay. Director Riley made the motion. Director Evans seconded it. Discussion? No discussion? Roll call vote.
Excuse me, Chair, I have some comments.
Go ahead, Director Hoffman.
Regardless of what statements the general manager made, my assessment of the budget and the corresponding resolution is that the requirements stated in Ordinance 152 are not met. As a result, I believe that the district risks a class action lawsuit that could result in millions of dollars in damages for the district. Additionally, the proposed inclusion of $3 million in expenditures, at least $3 million, that will never actually occur in 2020, 21. Those unneeded dollars should be taken, should not be taken from the citizens in our communities at a time when many of them are suffering financial hardship due to the economic impacts of COVID-19. Give an opportunity to send a message of empathy, understanding and leadership to the communities we serve by sunsetting in full or in part water supply charge as required under Ordinance 152 during this budget cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. General Manager, do we suppose to have a discussion on 152 in August sometime?
Yeah, August or September should be the point in time where we finally received three years of receipts. We, we first began receiving it or assessing it in July of 2017.
Okay.
And the board adopted in 2016, April, I believe it was, a specific policy to collect both charges for a period of time. One of the things that's lost in the memory of all of this is the user fee was reinstated, but the contractual mitigation fee and the water conservation fee, the district water conservation fee were also taken off of the CalAms bill at the same time. So it wasn't like the reinstatement of the user fee was found money. It was money that was used to offset expenses that were separately billed. And therefore, we needed time to just see what the behavioral aspect, how much money it really would generate over and above the mitigation program and the conservation program that, the revenue stream that was lost.
Okay.
Chair, there really needs a clarification here because actually Ordinance 152 specifically states that any issues related to 152 and compliance or continuing the charge are done during the budget process, not in the mid-year. So I disagree with the characterization of the general manager.
Okay. All right. We're going to do a roll call vote now. Roll call vote there.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Byrne? Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Hoffman?
No.
Director Potter?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Evans? Aye. And Director Edwards?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-1.
Thank you, Director.
Motion pass 6-1. Next item, please.
The next item is item 33, consider sending a letter to the California Coastal Commission for consideration of the Monterey Peninsula Water Supply Project.
Thank you. General Manager.
Yes, this was a request by the Chair to put in front of the entire board the option of participating in via a letter, the California Coastal Commission hearing scheduled for August on the Monterey Peninsula Water Supply Project. The options that have been presented to you is first exhibit is a draft letter that would just restate the current unchanged district position supporting the Monterey Peninsula Water Supply Project. Second exhibit is a letter that recognizes Pure Water Monterey expansion as a feasible alternative and suggests it move forward with desalination reserved for future increment of water supply. And the third option, of course, being no participation, no letter.
Okay. Thank you. Board questions or comments? Questions for right now? Any board questions?
Chair, I do have one question.
Go ahead there, Director Evans.
My question is from a grammatical standpoint.
Yes, it should say we.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll fix that one. Thanks.
For the benefit of everyone else, I wanted to state that if we were sending it with a signature from the board, I felt that instead of the pronoun I, we should be pronoun we. That was all. If either letter goes, then I think that that change should be made. So thank you, General Manager.
Thank you, Director Evans. Any other board members before I send it to the public? Other board members? Arlene, we're going to open it up to the public for two minutes each.
All right. If anyone would like to comment, please raise your hand or dial star nine so that we can see that, so that you can line up to speak. All right, I see one person waiting to speak. Just a moment. All right. Ms. Ms. Teneck, please present your comment.
I see Carol. Yes, thank you. I'm Carol Setnick from Seaside. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Please pass along the letter that recommends Pure Water Monterey to the CCC. Measure J proved the majority of our community and elected leaders do not support CalAms DSal project. Our reason, our region should not be forced into CalAms expensive DSal, especially not while a pandemic is clobbering our economy. Building it with double our ratepayers' water bills at a time we can least afford it and slow our economy. We know CalAms promotes its DSal because it earns a 9.2 rate of return on its capital investments. If CalAms buys water from the recycling project, the cost is passed through to customers with no profit going to CalAms corporate parent and shareholders. Recycled water from the expansion can supply sufficient fresh water to our region for a generation. In the long term, we may need DSal, but let's use the best design available then. Today's DSal's are expensive because pressures of more than 1,000 pounds per square inch must be generated to push salty water through filters. Lawrence Livermore researchers have recently developed a technique that lowers the cost of desalinating seawater. It uses porous carbon materials, allowing saltwater to easily flow through electrodes. Let's wait. Losing BWM, the affordable solution the Monterey One Water Board has given us would be just another calamity. Let's ditch decisive CalAms and our best water decisions will literally bubble up. Thank you. Okay, there we go.
Marley Melton, please present your comment. Marley Melton, please present your comment. All right, I'm going on to the next speaker.
All right.
Wayne Kelly, please present your comment.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinion. I really appreciate everything that you all are doing. I appreciate your work and I think you've done a really good job up to this point and I've been impressed. What I want to say is, you know, despite my history of living on the peninsula, which I've lived here for quite a while, my whole life, if you just use logic and deduction, the public water projects are already up and going. It's just going to get better and that is our best option right now. The DSal plant is imaginary right now. We're just, we're picturing it, they're picturing it. You know, we're not going to come together on an agreement with Cal-Am. We're tired of what they've been doing for years in this area. And I'm, I'm just, you know, that's my opinion. That's all I can say is I just would really like you to side with the public water, the project with Monterey One, and I just appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Melody Chrislock, please present your comment.
Hi, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Melody Chrislock, Public Water Now. I know you can all guess which letter I want you to send, which letter we want you to send. I would hope that you would not take the option of not participating. I don't really think you have that option considering Measure J and the public trust that's been invested. I certainly would hope you would send a letter asking the Coastal Commission to deny Cal-Am's DSal. I hope you have a chance to read the letter from our elected officials, including Senator Monting and Assembly Member Stone, who also weighed in on this issue with the State Water Resources Control Board, and those letters were all copied to the Coastal Commission as well. The Coastal Commission needs to know where you stand on this. It's been a strange hole in the conversation where, like Marina Coast Water District is constantly talking to the Coastal Commission in public comment and in private sessions, and yet you kind of have set this out for a while now. I really hope you will move forward and not do that in the future. The community really needs your leadership on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Thompson, please present your comment.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Anna Thompson and I reside in Carmel. I urge you to approve sending the letter 3B requesting the CCC to deny Cal-Am's desalination plan. I believe the Cal-Am's proposed DSal plant is not in the best interest of the Peninsula's great community. The public order, no, the Pure Water Monterey, sorry, Pure Water Monterey expansion is clearly the superior alternative. This project can be developed and implemented in time to meet the state board's season decision order, and it will provide enough water to meet our water needs and others to come at a fraction of the cost. Despite all evidence to the contrary, Cal-Am and its supporters claim the Cal-Am's proposed DSal is the only viable option to meet our current and future water needs and to meet the state board's season decision order. If Cal-Am's claims were true, you would think that Cal-Am would have welcomed the opportunity to do a cost-benefit analysis and comparison with the Pure Water Monterey expansion project, but Cal-Am has refused to do so. The negative environmental impacts of Cal-Am desalination project are numerous. As a coastal community, the impact of climate change is of great concern. Cal-Am's DSal project will produce 5,000, 5,000 metric tons of CO2 every year. Cal-Am's DSal would adversely affect up to 35 acres of coastal units and sensitive habitat. Cal-Am's DSal would add 8 million gallons of brine discharge daily to the Monterey Bay Marina Sanctuary, impacting coastal water quality. It certainly would be much, we would all be much better off, environmentally and economically speaking, to recycle as much water as possible. The more water was recycled, the more the savings.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Sorry, I just want to say please oppose Cal-Am's flow of DSal plant.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Jeff Davy, please present your comment.
Yes, thank you. This is Jeff Davy. I'm co-chair of the Coalition of Peninsula Businesses and I'm speaking tonight, asking you to send a letter in support of the Monterey Water Supply Project. The reason for that is because years ago, this district has come on board with the three-pronged approach that involved lockover storage, a reclamation project, and a DSal plant. The current Monterey water, Monterey water project does not have enough water to provide a solution to our problem and solve the CDO and get us off the river in Carmel and solve the problem that we have with the state. So its expansion, many people theorized could do that, but in fact, even that could not. And of course, the expansion EIR was not even certified by their board. It's not even an option out there. There is no option other than the options that we have in front of us, which is this DSal plant, and it's the only way to solve the CDO and solve our problem for the long term. This board, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, has never changed in that position. And this letter, if you choose the letter to oppose that DSal plant, you're changing your position, a position that you took a long time to come up with after looking at citizens' reviews and other activities for years. I don't think that should happen or change just with a letter. I would urge you, if you're really bound about doing that, that you call a special meeting in order to debate the reasoning for making this shift and then decide what letter to send. But it would be very, I think, a very big mistake to send a letter opposing the approval of the DSal to the Coastal Commission, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Marley Melton, please present your comment. Okay. Hello? I will have to unmute your mic. Marley, because we cannot hear you clearly.
She either got a phone on or...
Paul Bruno, please present your comment.
Good evening, board members. Paul Bruno. I'm a 30-year activist with regard to water issues here on the Monterey Peninsula. In fact, I'm not quite sure which hat to wear tonight. I spent 19 years as a director, founding director of the Carmel River Watershed Conservancy, currently its vice president. Learned about that Carmel River and what we can do to protect it. Our DSal plant, I'm obviously in favor of letter number one in support of the DSal plant. That DSal plant is the only drought-resistant water supply component of our three-legged stool. The second letter mentions four times Pure Water Monterey expansion. And we all know that there's issues with the expansion. And to deny that is, is to deny fact. In fact, I'll use what one of the other speakers said. I believe it's imaginary at this point in time. And also, some speakers have confused Measure J with a vote about DSal. Measure J, when they ran the campaign, they're very clear. It was not about DSal, it was about taking over Cal-American Water. To now say the results of Measure J means that we don't want DSal is a bridge too far. The voters weren't asked to vote about DSal. They were asked to vote about whether or not Cal-Am should own the water supply. So to have them go there is something they shouldn't do. We need a solution. The DSal plant is the solution. And to now change course after this many years would be, I believe, foolhardy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
And if you have already spoken, please disable your raised hand icon. Amy Anderson, please present your comment.
Okay, let's see. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Hello?
We can hear you, Ms. Anderson.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. It seems like, I guess it was last November, the Coastal Commission meeting, when they presented their findings of their studies with, that clearly delineated all kinds problems that they had with the proposal from Cal-Am. So here we are, seven, eight months later, and it seems to me that because the supply and demand report of the general manager was verified by a couple of outside reviewers and because you're a forward-looking board and you're looking at what's basically the way of the future, not the way of the past. This is done, this, recycling water is an incredible technology used to great effect in Southern California, in Orange County. And we have an award-winning plant that can do this in recycling the water. We are following a bore, a California mandate, and we are decreasing the pollution, the air pollution and contribution to global warming by a tremendous amount. So it only makes sense to me that you would send the letter acknowledging what you've worked, what you've accomplished with Pure Water Monterey in finding the water to serve this community without DSal at this time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for yours.
Michael Bear, please present your comment. Michael Bear?
Thank you.
Please present your comment.
Yeah, you can hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I wrote a letter to this board over the weekend. I hope you maybe had a chance to review it. Just want to highlight a couple of those things. And by way of rebuttling Mr. Davy, who said years ago, you guys endorsed the DSal plant and that's been your position all along, and you shouldn't change horses in the middle of the stream. According to that initial letter years ago, it was 2012. It was eight years ago. Things have changed in eight years, particularly in the demand and supply categories. The demand has dropped dramatically, significantly, and of course, the CPUC and Cal-Am don't recognize that in their water budget. And the change in supply, the Pure One Monterey has come a long way since 2012 and is not over the hump yet. And then the other, the other speaker earlier mentioned about there are upcoming advances in technology, that if we use Pure One as a bridge, and my understanding is it does get us off the CDO, you know, it meets some of the next milestones, just what we have going right now. And the expansion can, you know, can basically meet our need for decades to come. And in that time, if doubt, DSal is required, there's going to be a whole nother new technologies that we can employ that will hopefully be more efficient and more cost-effective. But I'm a little concerned about the letter that you wrote in favor, that it only focuses on the expansion. I mentioned water rights. Cal-Am has 500 acre feet of water rights. And you can't do 17,000, whatever it is, when you don't have the water rights. And you should stand up for that in your letter. Thank you.
Thank you.
J. E. Tynan, please present your comment. And can you identify yourself? Mr. Tynan?
Yeah, I'm having a little trouble here.
All right. We can hear you.
Oh, you can?
Yes.
I'm Eric Tynan. I'm the GM for the Castroville Community Services District. Just a couple rebuttals real quick is the Coastal Commission, when they did its report, it talked about equitable justice, and they didn't talk to Castroville at all. And we were the most disadvantaged community. It had Marina and Seaside, but it didn't have Castroville, which I thought was really odd, and I called them on it. Also, just for a little bit of history, Monterey One Water, it was actually built and it's permitted for 29 million gallons a day. It's only doing about 18 million gallons. So counting on sewer flows or some of these other flows, they're not as reliable as you might want to think. I think the best thing is try to move forward the three-legged stool like it was originally planned. And I think it'd be better for everybody, but this is a very reputable board. I know you try to do the right thing. So I wish you all the best and thanks for all of your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I see. Are there any other? Scott Dick, please present your comment.
Thank you very much, Arlene. This is just directed at the board. A little bit of history, 1993, the board chair opposed the DSal plant that had, the water district had spent a lot of money studying and getting permits for. Cal-Am tried to move forward. Of course, he opposed the DSal plant in favor of the dam, which was defeated. Cal-Am tried to use those permits. It took initiative put together by a community to stop them. So to say it's Cal-Am's fault, we don't have water is not true. Second of all, George Riley and I know for sure, back in August of 2018, and Dave Stoltz was there, said he wasn't opposed, and Public Water Now was not opposed to the DSal plant. Had nothing to do with Measure J, Measure J, sorry. I think it's unconscionable that this board would move back into the 1993 history of opposing a permanent drought-resistant, sustainable water supply that'll get us off the CDO. And I think you should send a letter supporting DSal. There's a lot of issues people raise that are completely not factual, are not based in evidence, and they've been repeating them over and over again. And you know, if you repeat the same thing over and over again, people start to believe it. So thank you very much. I hope you do the right thing and support DSal once and for all so we can have some economic and social justice and create some housing for people that can't live there. Thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, are there any other comments? Here we go. Oh. Chair Edwards, I see no other raised hands.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I see Mark Kelly, just, it just came up.
What time is it? But since that's Mark Kelly, we'll listen to him. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly? Did you have a comment?
He already commented earlier.
Okay, it just keeps up great. All right, I'm going to stop.
Okay, back to the board.
Chair, please.
Yes, go ahead, Chair.
I make a motion that we approve the letter to the Coastal Commission supporting Monterey expansion, Pure Water Monterey expansion.
I'll second that. For discussion?
I have a comment.
All right.
Director Byrne. I think it's unfortunate for this board to overturn what we have worked on for many years. The three-legged stool, as it's been referred to, was the solution long-term, which is the D-SAL, and short-term and intermediate. So all bases would be covered. I am absolutely against promoting the expansion of Monterey One Water, or Pure Water Monterey as being the instead project of the D-SAL Nation Plant. If we leave it alone, the Pure Water Monterey expansion as the stopgap for when this D-SAL gets stalled, the expansion project will probably take its interim place as it was intended. But we would still have the option of the long-term project with D-SAL. D-SAL is decades, and the expansion project is, with luck, 20 years. I cannot support this motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Yeah, I heard what that made.
Go ahead, Director Hoffman.
Yeah, I have concerns about the letter of the substantive motion. Statements made in bullet points one, three and five are not supported by any documents that we received to corroborate the claims that are made. For example, bullet number one makes a statement that is contradicted by Monterey One Water in the sequoia documents for the expansion. And then in bullet three, actually, the state water board has stated that the expansion is not sufficient to let the season assist order. So I have just problems with sending letters that are not actually based and just just makes our credibility in question. So unless the board has something substantive and factual to add to the administrative record for the specific issues of the coastal development permit, I don't see the need to send this letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. Any other directors want to make comments?
I do, please.
Okay, go ahead, Chair. I heard Director Potter cutting in, but...
No, go ahead, Mr. Potter.
No, no, George, I'll defer to you.
All right, thank you.
Also, Mary Adams had her hand raised.
Okay, we want to get to them.
I'm in a rush.
I, I'm not new to this subject, and I'm not new to this community. And despite what others might think, I have, I think, the ratepayers and the community in my priority scheme. The difficulty I have with the D-SAL project is that so much new information has evolved, has developed, has become known, and undisputed facts since 2012, when this district first supported the D-SAL at the portfolio, the three-legged stool. I'm not opposed to the three-legged stool. But I do think that the current realities are very different than they were eight years ago. I'm, first of all, very, very committed to trying to get rid of the CDO. And the best option we have to get rid of the CDO as soon as possible is the potential of Pure Water Monterey expansion meeting the needs. And so that's one of my priorities. The second priority for me is that the cost of D-SAL should be the supply of last resort. There's no reason why that should be elevated ahead of any low-hanging fruit. There is no argument anywhere. Engineers, philosophers, legal minds, nowhere would you elevate a high-cost project ahead of a lower-cost option. So I don't get that. Point number three. CalAmaran has already adopted Dave Stoltz's demand numbers. They have already adopted it. So the people who are arguing in favor of D-SAL don't, do not have CalAmaran in that argument anymore. Because CalAmaran, in their own rate case, has used essentially the same numbers that Dave Stoltz's study has concluded and as confirmed by other studies, has already abandoned that issue. So that, that's my argument. And I do not think that this district can stand aside and not take a position on this issue. We're expected to be the water agency. We're expected to provide leadership. Elections have consequences. And I want to go back even to the elections of 2008 and '10, or whenever Bob Brower and Jeanne Byrne were elected to this board. They were barely on this board together before there was a real focus by this district on water supply solutions, being part of the solution, not part of the just, the spectators. And I think that trajectory for the last 10 years or so has been very clear that the district wants to be in the water supply business in order to be part of the solution, not a spectator. And I think the recent election continues that trajectory. And that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Adams?
Thank you. I may not be able to speak quite as eloquently as my fellow board director, Mr. Riley, but my sentiments are quite similar. I was elected by the people of District Five. And I was elected because I promised that I would listen to them and I would learn from them, and then I would lead in the way that I felt was appropriate. And I can tell you from the comments that I've heard since I've been on this board, that I continue to hear from the people who live in my district, I have to support the work that we are doing for a not, a non-D-SAL project. And it isn't just because of the horrendous difference in the cost, although I must say, virtually every person that I hear from comments on the inability that we would have to, the inability to pay that looms heavily. But in addition to that, the carbon footprint, the ecological damage that something like this gigantic D-SAL plant would do to our area is very seriously taken by many of the people that I represent. I think that we have done a lot of hard work looking at other options. I think that the Pure Water Monterey project is an absolutely fine project. I was terribly disappointed when the Monterey One Water Board chose not to move forward with the expansion. And I, I think that was a big mistake. I speak for myself, and I think I represent the people in my district well. And I will not be able to support any kind of a D-SAL project at this time. It should be the school of last resort. And perhaps at some time, when we see that we need to change, then we could look at a regional solution, perhaps through D-SAL, that would provide water for the entire county, not the one that's being proposed now. So I feel that it's important for us to write a letter to the Coastal Commission, as has been submitted. And I am happy to have my name attached to that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Adams. Director Potter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I find myself agreeing with a couple of people here. I do agree with George Riley and Mary Adams. Obviously, the political winds are blowing in a different direction. That's pretty normal in the course of time. But George did mention that there is the potential that the Pure Water Project would address the issues regarding the CDO. It's a potential, and Gary Kaufman, who is a very, I don't know how to say it tonight, Gary, a very interesting individual when it comes to opining, certainly hit it correctly in my mind when he said there's no factual basis here before us tonight. So I'm actually a big supporter of Pure Water. I think it's a good project, I'd support it. And if the letter was simply to say you support Pure Water, I would send that letter immediately and say, yeah, I'm supportive of it. But to put it against a project that hasn't had a full vetting of the reasons why is necessary to vote against another project or encourage the voting of another, of the other project, that being the D-SAL project. Which frankly, I think is mired in the fact that there's a great deal of dislike, and I will say justifiedly so for CalAmaran and the way they run their business. That hatred seems to cloud the facts an awful lot for me. So I'm perfectly happy sending a letter that says I support Pure Water Monterey project, but I don't want to go ahead and cloud it by saying, I want to go ahead and take down the D-SAL project at this point. Because I do think that that should, the project should have a stay in court. Headed to the Coastal Commission. And I don't want to go ahead and say I'm supporting Pure Water Monterey only because of the fact that I think there are alternatives out there. I'd like to see that project get a fair, unbiased steering.
All right, sir. Director Evans?
Thank you, Chair. I do have a few comments. And while my fellow directors are very salient, there are some very salient points. And I find myself nodding in agreement with a lot of them. I, I have thought this a lot. I think the, it is, it is very difficult to pick one water supply project over another because at the end of the day, what we're looking for is a water supply project. While we have been very supportive in the past of the three-legged stool, I think that to say that just because we have done it for the last eight years, that we need to continue to do it, I think is shortsighted. If we don't change with the times or with new information that's presented, then we do our, then we do the people that we serve a great disservice. So if there are changes, which I believe there are, then the position needs to be revisited. I think that if we look at the future, the future of California, the Senate Bill 332, that's making its way through the state legislature at this time, brings up the idea of reducing discharge in the not-so-distant future. So anybody with an NPDES permit needs to reduce the amount of water going out to the ocean. That does fall on Monterey One Water. But I think that Pure Water Monterey, recycling the water, is a better option than desalination, which uses, I think it's a two-to-one ratio. So you need three times the water for every gallon of water you get, you need three gallons to make it. So that would add to the discharge. And I think that that would put us in a negative way in trying to meet that state mandate should that pass the legislature this year. So I am in agreement that, from an environmental standpoint, when it comes to greenhouse gases, the amount of water discharged, damage to the sanctuary, there are so many things that the D-SAL plant will worsen, and Pure Water Monterey would better. So between the two projects, I see the advantages of Pure Water Monterey. I agree with Director Potter in that this letter, the way that it's laid out, is not, it does not allow the Coastal Commission to give, does not give the D-SAL plant a fair opportunity in front of the Coastal Commission. That said, I think that the Coastal Commission, their charter is to protect the coast for the enjoyment of all Californians. And I think that they deserve to know that we can solve our problems or at least mitigate them for the near term by going with a project other than the desalination plant. So that said, I believe I will be in favor of sending this letter against the Pure Water Monterey expansion project.
Thank you, Director Evans. General Manager? That first bullet in there? Any comments on that first bullet? Is it fact or is it what, what you get your conclusion from that first bulletin that you put in there?
I believe, A, it's feasible. And I believe the conclusions of the supply and demand study were either project can meet the needs of the community for the next several decades. The 20 months comes from the earlier schedule based on a certification at their Monterey One Waters February board meeting.
Okay. And I think you mentioned something about the third bullet? Was it the third bullet? You mentioned something?
Yeah, and I think this has not been aired in front of the entire board. It was a presentation in front of water supply planning and elsewhere. I mean, the mathematics has been out there. What you don't want is to build a water supply that is only barely enough to squeak by. It's what I call, you don't want to be back in the principal's office in a couple of years. You need water for future growth in a manner that's sufficient to not only offset the remaining unlawful diversions, but still has additional water in it. The mathematics of only needing approximately 800 acre feet has been well discussed in the community and committee level.
Okay. Mr. Laredo? Do we have any problems with this letter? Second letter?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a piece of advocacy, it's not a piece of evidence. This states what the position is of your body. And I believe that you have the discretion to do that.
These are my comments on this. It's not about Measure J. Not at all about Measure J. I'm for one to say that. It's about a water project. That eight years ago, we thought it could work with three legs. It still can work with three legs. But the third leg right now is going to be the expansion. And we need to move that along. I don't know why y'all designed, or who designed that plant and added on pieces for expansion. Because somebody else knew something that we doing right now, back then when they did that. So I have to agree with them. I'm glad they did it. Let's add that piece on there. I'm not against D-SAL. But I am against this D-SAL project. It hurts all of Seaside. It hurts it. It hurts the side of Seaside and Marina coast. It hurts the CalAmaran seaside with the cost. It does, it doesn't do anything for the public water company that Seaside has. That D-SAL have no water for. But let me say this. Pure Water helps the city all the way around. It does not attack the environmental on the Marina side. It helps them. It helps the seaside side with the cost of the water. It helps seaside municipal. They can buy water from it. They help their system out. So eight years ago, yes, it was something done eight years ago. But there's nothing wrong with changing your mind. We have a president that's changing his mind daily. On stuff that's been for years. So it's okay for him. I know it's okay for us to do this. So I'm going to close with this. Don't give up. I'm not giving up on D-SAL. But this is not the D-SAL project we should be looking at. We shouldn't be looking at it. Hey, I don't know a public agency that are going to put a private, for-profit water company in front of the public. I hope it's not a water agency out there doing that. I hope not. Because we shouldn't. We shouldn't. So I'm going to close with that. We're going to call for the question. On the motion?
Director Hoffman?
No.
Director Adams?
Mute.
So sorry. Director Potter?
No.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Unmuted.
Director Byrne?
No.
Director Riley?
I am.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Motion passed four to three. Thank you. Jim, what's the next item, Arlene?
Is item 34, Board Review and Action Related to Recent Correspondence Sent to Monterey One Water.
General Manager?
The staff note says all that needs to be said. It's up for discussion at your level.
Okay, Mr. Laredo?
Yes, sir.
Kind of way we could do this?
I'm sorry, one more time?
Is there any other way we could do this? Do we have to do this in open session?
Oh, you do not have the ability to go into closed session on this. No, sir.
Okay. So we have to do it in open session. We had a letter sent out, and we're going to take action. And the reason it came to the board, because I can't do it in closed session. So it's up to the board, or what we're going to do, and how we want to handle.
This is a public hearing.
Okay, wait, wait. One at a time.
I'd rather we frame the discussion around a motion. I'm not going to take no action.
I'll second that.
Okay. Take no action. Motion by Director Potter, and second by the Vice Chair. To take no action. Discussion.
The discussion, as the maker of the motion, I'd like to say that I really think it's unnecessary. It's a little bit of a public hearing of maybe a disagreement on the board personally, but I really don't think that there's anything. If I was going to censor Gary for anything, I'd censor him for fully too many items off the consent agenda. But frankly, I don't see this as a punishable act. I don't think he should be censored for this. He made a mistake. He admitted it. He confessed to it. He apologized. I think that's the end of the subject for me.
Okay. And second, okay, any other discussion?
I have a comment, please.
Go ahead, Director Ralph.
I think words matter. I think public accountability matters. I think we all have this struggle between what we feel personally, and what we feel professionally, and what we feel in our job. And we've been elected to do a particular job. And I just want to point out that there are several phrases in Gary's, and Gary, I'll speak to you directly, in your letter, that seems to reflect more of an attitude than a fact. And I just want to, I just want to comment on this, because I have some concerns in this direction. The letter purportedly from the Board of Directors, it was from the Board of Directors, issued a personal apology. That seems like it's entirely personal and has nothing to do with any legal standing or personal issue. So I think you've mixed up your personal attitudes and positions with some professional and public interest advocacy on your part. You have judged already that the issue is not reviewed consistent with the Brown Act. You're not an attorney. You quickly comment in frequent sessions, I think, about some people who are not engineers, and you criticize them for not being engineers. And yet, you kind of practice the same policy of accusing people of not being something when you're not one yourself. You're not an attorney. So I have concerns about that. Last thing I want to say is that your last sentence about you want to do everything you can to maintain and grow a collaborative partnership. How do you do that with problems like this? My comments are concluded.
Thank you. We have somebody on.
Comes to an end. They're going, immediately going into closed session.
Arlene, Arlene, please cut your mic off. Thank you. Any other board members on this motion?
Chair Edwards, since everybody's weighed in, I'll weigh in myself.
Go ahead, Director Hoffman.
I stand behind every word in my May 1 letter. When I saw the final letter, the one to Monterey One Water, which bore no resemblance to the letter provided to the board for closed session, I was shocked and deeply concerned that the reckless and inflammatory language in Chair Edwards' letter would expose a district to potential litigation. Did not anyone review the funding agreement before making the threat to withhold funds? I will continue to speak out when I see illegal actions occur, and I will continue to strongly advocate for open government, regardless of any action the board may take against me. As, just for the record, I did not attend the closed session, because I had sent an email to Chair and the Vice Chair stating beforehand my concerns about the fact that the information provided was not something for closed session. My email was ignored. I was requested by others to participate in the meeting, regardless of my concerns. I did not do that, so that I was not complicit in the Brown Act violation. I still look forward to the district responding to my cure and correct letter as relates to the Brown Act violation that I alleged.
Is that all, Director Hoffman?
Yes, Chair.
Thank you. Director Adams, do you have any comments?
I prefer to keep my comments just private and personal.
Thank you. Director Evans, do you have any comments?
I have no comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Arlene, let's take it out to the public, please. Arlene?
Yes.
We're going to take it out to the public, please.
All right. Just a moment. Melody Christa, please present your comment.
Yes, you can see by Director Hoffman's statement that he's clearly not sorry. He's belligerent, and he would do it again. So I don't know what else you can do. I mean, he's defied the whole board and their action. He deserves some kind of penalty for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Bear, please present your comment.
Hi, I didn't even, I was wanting, I was trying to raise my hand, and I couldn't. Can you, hold on, hold on.
I see your hand is raised.
We can hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I...
Yes.
Boardwork, can you hear me?
Now we can. We can hear you, yes.
All right. So I don't want to get too involved, and this is, you know, this is for you to take care of. But, you know, I was struck when I heard about his letter, Mr. Hoffman's letter, that he would take a position that, you know, that my understanding is the board had gone through a thorough discussion, came to a decision about what to present, and that he went outside his lane in saying, you know, you voted no in the meeting, but that doesn't give you the right to, you know, you are part of a board. And so when the board makes a decision you don't like, I think it behooves you to, you know, follow the board. So I was very surprised and upset that someone, anyone would take a position in opposite to something that you had voted on as a group. And so that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Paul Bruno, please present your comment.
Members of the board, I'm in support of the motion for no action. I've read, I've read the staff report. I've read the rule. I don't think anywhere can we believe that this actually was him trying to be spokesperson for the district versus a member speaking up. He did not do so in the name of the district. I'm going to agree with George Riley. This was entirely personal, as it was. So I agree, George. It looks like it was entirely personal. He said, my understanding, he said, quote, "personal apology." He goes, rest assured, quote, "I will do everything," quote, "I can," lists himself as a Division V Director. This is clearly the comments by one individual director. Now, if you do want to take action, terrific, because I love going to meetings. I go to a lot of places people don't expect me to be. I often record things. I can't wait to use this in the future. If this is how this board wants to act against one of its members, perfect. Then I get to play the game. So I just really think that this has gone too far. I think you've aired enough dirty laundry tonight, and it should be done with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeff Davi, please present your comment.
Thank you, Jeff Davi, lifelong member of the board. Excellent. I appreciate Director Potter making a motion for no action. I think it's very, very wise. And I have, I have a lot more to say about this, and I'm going to be a little bit less, because we should move along. But I do think it's important to realize that your district has rules, and it allows the district director to speak personally with a dissenting opinion. And that is all this was. And in the past, when directors, and I won't mention them by name, but in particular, two directors spoke mistakenly, saying they were speaking for the district at a Coastal Commission hearing a year ago, and one of them had the decency to apologize at the next board meeting. The other one, I don't recall ever did, but it doesn't matter. My point is, you didn't take any action against them. You simply pointed that out. It was addressed. It was nothing like this. Is it because this is in writing that this is much more severe? I don't agree. You also then, in a subsequent meeting in January, discussed Rule 6, disgusted ad nauseam, and did no changing to it. So the directors can speak personally a dissenting opinion of this board. That's the rules you have in place, and that's all that's going on here. And I really don't know why we're trying to take it any further. I don't think Director Hoffman did anything wrong. And I would just like to move forward, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chair Edwards, I see no other raised hands.
Thank you, Arlene. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Before we, before I call for the questions, let me say this to everyone. At that Coastal Commission, I did not say I was speaking for the district. I say who I was. That's what I did. Other things in this, before I finish this up, Mr. Laredo, is there anything wrong with the letter that he wrote? Tell us. If it's not, we'll move on. If it is, tell us what it was.
You're unmuted. There you go. No, you're back unmuted.
Thank you. Well, the one thing that I do disagree is Mr. Hoffman's statement and inference that this board met in closed session without being compliant with the Brown Act. And I don't, I have attended every one of those closed sessions of this board, and I do believe that the board was, has been scrupulously compliant with the Brown Act and the directions that it took on April 30th, as stated in the minutes of that meeting, do comply with the Brown Act.
Thank you. Anything else wrong with that letter?
Mr. Hoffman did sign it as a Division V Director, and I believe that is not technically compliant with the rules of order for this board. But I have to say, others have done that as well.
Okay, thank you.
As a second on the motion, I would like to call the question.
Okay. Can I finish my comments? I'm going to finish my comments on this, because I don't like what he did. And there's nothing wrong with running through general counsel. It's a letter in our emails that we got today from elect officials that I wanted to sign. You know what I did? I ran it through Mr. Laredo, and he told me what was wrong with that letter, why I could not sign. And I advise any other board member to do that, too. Run your letters through. If it's talking about water, run it through Mr. Laredo. Let him check it. I don't care if you want to sign it after that, and it comes to the board. This will happen. It will happen again, because that's why I emailed him. Mr. Laredo, how can I stay out of trouble with the board? Because like Mr. Bruno said, it is people out there that's going to be watching every word that we say, every letter that we sign. So I behoove anybody to run it through, check it. Now, if this board don't want to do anything with it, fine by me. I'm going to vote. I'm not going to support this motion. But if we got four to support it, it's done with. But I behoove you. You do something wrong, it comes to me. I'm going to do the right action and bring it to the full board. And the full board are signing all the letters, all of them, coming from the board, not from me. I ended with that. All for the question now.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Mary, go back. There we go.
Abstain.
I'm sorry?
I abstain.
Director Potter?
It looks to me as if Director Potter has left the meeting.
Thank you. Director Riley?
Well, he was the maker of the motion, so I would say he was the yes.
Mr. Laredo?
No, there is no vote by proxy. You have to participate in the meeting at the time the vote is called. He will be recorded, unless he returns before the vote is concluded, he'll be recorded as being absent.
Pointed order, can you abstain without a conflict?
Yes, I believe you can.
Okay.
Director Riley?
Abstain.
Director Byrne?
Yes.
Director Edwards?
No.
Hang on. Director Potter is texting me that he is still here, so let's go back to the participants list.
Okay, let me see.
Hello.
Who are Director Potter?
Yes, aye.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. A new tutorial, and obviously in the computer science world.
That's all right, sir. Okay, vote count. Okay, vote conflicts.
Okay, I'm not sure, do I ask Hoffman for a vote or not?
Yes, no, no.
Yes.
Yes.
No, I read in here. Mr. Laredo, can Mr. Hoffman vote on this?
A member who's subject to censure may debate the censure motion but cannot vote on motion.
Well, this motion was to do nothing. Does that count?
That's correct. This does count. Mr. Hoffman should not be voting on this matter.
And if the discussion ended because of the calls of question?
Yes.
Yeah. So let's get to tally then.
I have three yes votes, one no, and two abstained.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I believe those abstentions were not by reason of a conflict of interest. There is case law that the effect of an abstention in this circumstance counts in favor of the motion as worded. I cite to Dry Creek Association as the case law that applies. So I think the two abstentions do count as yes votes in this context.
So it's done.
Thank you.
Hello.
Okay.
Could we talk about a conflict of interest?
Well, what would be the impact of a three to three vote?
If it's three to three, it would be no action.
No, and it's a tie. No action. Which is the same as the vote.
Yeah, so this is closed with no action, correct?
I have not heard that any abstention was based on a conflict of interest.
Can we talk about conflict of interest?
You certainly may.
So I don't know...
It's not immediate agenda.
Well, it has to do with the reason that I abstained from this vote.
Yes.
And it is a conflict of interest in my own personal belief of how boards of directors should conduct themselves. And I am not happy with the way this has gone. And if I have to say that another conflict might be what could be coming up in the future, you know, I have difficulty with that.
Chair, if I could add on to Mary's comment briefly, I think what might have been basically what Mr. Bruno was alluding to is how we conduct ourselves in public, and if we're going to become the operators in the system, how professionally are we going to run that system when we can't seem to get along amongst ourselves? So that is my main reason for not wanting to take any action today, because I don't think we should be doing this in public where we have disagreements with the way our colleagues have behaved. And I can tell you, I'm not pleased at all with the way Gary responded. But on the other hand, I do think that's something I pick up with him personally, and I don't really like going through these issues in public. I actually contemplated stepping away from this issue tonight because I don't think it could come before the board or before the public. It's our business.
Okay, Mr. Laredo.
I would agree with Director Potter.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Laredo?
Yes, sir. Well, I believe that, you know, the question of a conflict is not capable of forensic proof one way or the other, so I believe that if a director is willing to assert that they have a conflict, and that is the reason for the abstention, I think that should be accepted at face value. So in which case, I believe that this was a two-one-one vote, and the motion does not pass.
Okay.
Since I abstained, may I comment?
Can we clarify? I thought Molly was an aye.
One.
Go ahead.
Mr. Laredo, can you clarify the last thing you just said, the change in the vote?
Well, my understanding was there were two in favor.
No, there were three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Potter, Byrne, and Evans were aye.
Okay, then in that case, there were three in favor, one opposed, two abstentions, one by reason of a conflict. If that's so, then I stand corrected. The abstention that was not by reason of a conflict should be counted as a vote in favor of the motion as worded, in which case the motion would pass.
Okay.
Can we move on so that we can get out of here tonight?
Could I?
You may, Vice Chair. I'm trying to move on.
Could I quickly comment on my abstention?
No.
I feel like I sometimes get in the same quandary that Gary does, and I want to change my vote if I can from an extension to a yes vote on the motion so that we take no action tonight on this issue.
The action is closed. It's done.
The effect is the same.
Okay.
Next item, please, General Manager.
Item 24 was moved from consent to this location. This item was the resolution for collection of the water supply charge.
Shall I agree the item?
Next item, please.
Consider adoption of Resolution 202009 certifying compliance with state law with respect to the levying of general and special taxes, assessments, and property-related fees and charges.
Okay. Any questions on it? Board question? No more questions? We'll take it to the public.
All right, I do see some raised hands.
Go ahead.
Just a moment.
Two minutes.
Mr. Bruno, please present your comment.
I think that's a leftover raised hand, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davi, please present your comment.
I'm sorry, same thing.
All right. Then I see no raised hands. Chair Edwards.
Thank you, Arlene. Okay, do we have a motion on the floor to approve this item?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Move the approval, and we've got a bunch of seconds out there, so we give it to the Vice Chair. Call for question.
Mr. Potter?
What your husband does, though?
Aye.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Hoffman?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Evans?
Aye.
Director Byrne?
Aye.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Okay, General Counsel, read us in the closed session, please.
So...
Thank you.
Go ahead, Arlene.
So have you adjourned the open session? Chair Edwards?
Yes. We're about to be read into the closed...
Yeah, we need to announce the purpose for the closed session. Mr. Chair, we have one item on the closed session calendar, and that's anticipated initiation of litigation by MPWMD. It's under Government Code 54956.9G. The District Board will continue its conference with legal counsel on whether to protect its rights and interests by initiating litigation against Monterey One Water related to actions taken and responses given on the Pure Water Monterey Expansion SEIR.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments on the closed session? No comments? Okay. Closed session.
We had one raised hand.
All right, I'm going to... Directors, please do not leave the meeting. I'm going to stop the recording, and then any members of the public, please leave the meeting. Directors do not leave the meeting.
Arlene, we had somebody out there with their hand raised.
Let's see. All right. Mr. Bruno, did you have a comment?
That's an actual raised hand. Are you adjourned in the meeting, or will you be coming back to report from closed session? If you're not coming back to report from closed session, when will we know what took place?
The report of closed session will be added to the district's website.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to... When you adjourn the meeting, Chair Edwards and I will stop the recording of the meeting.
Thank you. We are adjourned in the meeting and going into closed session. So everybody stay off.
All right, and Arlene will have to take a moment to discharge any of the attendees.
I will do that. And also, any staff who should not be involved, please leave the meeting also.